And welcome everybody to the August sixteenth work session of the town board. Can I have a motion to open the work session please?
So.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, Jill, you want to take it away?
Uh sure, the first. Sure, the first thing on our work session agenda is uh the formal abandonment of the FGIS for the four base code. So discussion.
Yeah, I don't know if it needed any more discussion, we've discussed it a couple times.
Well, I certainly have something to say, so you know how stuff happens with sharing my thoughts.
Sure.
All right. So I wrote some things out, so I think it makes it a little bit easier, but uh Chris, I think you had said one point, it's kind of like beating that horse to the game, it's not important, it's dead, it's dead, it's over. I'm not aware of any soil, I don't think anyone else here has either, um who not so big with these people bring out the regulators and bring us back to life. Sort of die on that now, if you will, uh for this code. But started back in two thousand nineteen as brainchild that supervised green seed. Like you released genuinely all the best intentions, but some of like job four forward that the rain need and the central like that there. It's done, it's gone, they have four base code, it's a thing of the past. Uh I think it's sort of best to call it the building man. It's something that's scary and it's been purported to be bigger than what it is, but to assert otherwise, it's a matter of coming back. Or that we should fear that it's coming back, as whole hardly this is genuine. Uh somewhat kind of like this resolution that I expect everyone will pass and the majority will pass, which I understand maybe the first in time. About the first four base queue, um and certainly not immediately necessary. Unless we find ourselves with the resolution that unlike the four base code, four base code itself. Not the problem of best intentions intentions part may, but I'm gonna use something that stinky, but I mean it's sort of like more. Uh it's distraction, albeit for people to pay attention because many residents are away on vacation. Distraction from the fact that this town board, despite the majority overstated promises, disrepresentation, and backlash has accomplished little to nothing.
Okay Jeremy, I no, you're just maligning the town board on which you are apart.
No, actually, no, 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 no. Has accomplished little to nothing when it comes to the central catalyst that had you all in your office.
Okay.
That was not heading the four base code, it was to implement smart and forward thinking reasoning. While we're simplifying the planning work process, help breathe long term sustainability, and light into the habit and encourage right type of development. It gave one job that each of us, each of you have nothing to show on day ten or even a hundred, but on day two twenty nine. And then nine months since this term started. Nine months without having a general pandemic, pandemic, pardon me, or anything like that.
Jeremy, what's the point of this? We're discussing the.
And excuse me, I'm. But I have to get to it, you'll have to wait, thank you.
This, not make trying to make the town board look bad, I understand that you're upset that we won.
Wait, and walk in soon. No, no.
But this is not appropriate, this is merely reciting the diatribe you put on Facebook to try to malign the rest of the town board.
No, no. I agree. So, no, so why are we here today? Go ahead and read the. Unnecessary first of its kind, or shortly closer first of its kind, formal resolution to this plan. While this town board, town supervisor, town council, all of us collectively have likely spent collectively dozens of hours drafting, reviewing, and redrafting resolution. It is unnecessary and not needed for super. We should pride ourselves in leadership, but not at this. So I want to look at page three, you want to look at page three and start there. The majority of the community remain concerned that completing the super process for the entire seventy eight years made of the study area. Will lay the groundwork for radical change in the Chaco business outlet inevitably lead to expanding inappropriate zoning in other areas of the outlet. Sure, it's arguably correct, and as you say on page four, the election held for town office in November, quick second two thousand twenty one. Was widely due to the referendum and town board's approval and application of four base code. So my question here is, if we're going to pass this resolution, what do you base your statement on about concern of majority of the community? Election certainly speaks for itself, and that's something that you raised. Um although you put it in a resolution, there's no point in litigating that. The fact is though, that roughly thirteen thousand five hundred eighty registered voters are here in Newcastle. Of which proxy thirty seven percent or five thousand one hundred came out of vote. Which is approximately uh roughly forty seven percent, not more than fifty percent ultimately voted for you. So that is nowhere anything near majority, so I don't see any information I would collect that as stated. On page four and five, I'm gonna read part of the resolution here. Over the past six months, social distancing and other safety protocols associated with the COVID nineteen pandemic have been easing in the downtown Chaco outlet. Is showing signs of rebounding economically. The current town board remains dedicated to facilitating residential retail development in the north really quarter by encouraging more new restaurants and retail stores to invest in the downtown Chaco outlet. By exploring opportunities to encourage new residential housing amenities improvements to areas, other areas of the downtown. So let's look at the facts again. Yes, there's a post-COVID rebound, absolutely nothing to do with this town board, me myself. But you say remain dedicated facilitating residential retail development on the north really quarter by encouraging more new restaurants and retail stores to invest in the downtown Chaco outlet. I ask you, what major accomplishments can we point to that corroborate this narrative? You have fifteen north really that came to us. And I imagine you can tell me if any conversations that are happening with developers behind closed doors. Otherwise, I'm not aware of anything that we've done, or nominal things that we've done. What legislation enacted over the past nine months, this resolution that is referring to, has encouraged new restaurants, retail stores, and investment downtown? What examples of that legislation exist? Uh has a ten percent affordability requirement made our smaller parcels, small town landlords more inclined to expand or build? Have we made the process easier? Is anyone's belief that changes to the fringes of below grade apartments, which are certainly a good step, are going to guide the habit to long term prosperity? Is that the plan that was promised? Turn to page five and six. However, the long term impacts of community character and other environmental factors from zoning in the higher study area, or any portion thereof. Were never fully assessed and studied by the former town board and its consultants. We want to say this town board buys the DGIS, the FGIS, including all analysis and responses contained therein. Were were inadequate insofar as supplemental zoning changes across all proportion of the study area, good Chaco outlet. The last part of the presidential read is the DGIS FGIS, including all analysis and response contained therein. Prepared for the four base code, did not adequately define and assess potential adverse environmental impacts to community character. Rising under a full buildout scenario of the entire city area or any portion thereof. Did not adequately minimize, provide identified adverse environmental impacts. So to use this old cliche, what this is, this town board is about to do is throwing out the baby with bathwater. Even worse, you're doing so in a manner what is it is slapping the face of the town staff. What degrees do we have? What study have we done say that the town staff is wrong, meaning our engineer, our town planner. All the consultants that we hired, both not just for the four base code, but well in advance of the four base code. We spent numerous times, I think we looked at discharge code twice. We reviewed that multiple times, we spoke to Tom DePaul. Did anyone consult with Sabrina, our director of planning, or account engineer Bob Cho, and see only the draft of this resolution? Did anyone? Um we spoke to Tom DePaul in discharge code, but not with our account engineer, account planner. Does anyone have a degree in engineering? No. What is it specifically, if this town board can tell me this majority, what is it about the two thousand sixteen sanitary super studies used in DGIS FGIS project? The two thousand sixteen engineers report from the potable water system. No, you're sorry, no I'm not.
It doesn't stop.
How about the two thousand two?
Cause you're not understanding what resolution had to attended prior meetings, maybe you would have understood.
Don't USP white paper on traffic. Not your matters to any of you there, what they say. Listen, I get that you don't like the DGIS and FGIS. But is the position of the town board majority that studies used the triangle, for example, in the center of the outlet, all its modifications configurations? The fifteen million dollar infrastructure project two thousand twenty, a town hall playground and basketball court. That the materials we provided people even now want to build in town that are the same that were used in DGIS FGIS project. And certain carbon addition that was removed from this resolution that would address that. Was that one of the points of the infrastructure project was to update the sanitary sewer in restaurant water, for example? Can Sabrina, Bob, WSP, and all of our prior consultants, despite their degrees, something get go wrong in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty? Whenever these studies were done, did the Westchester County Planning Board something to that when they review what material you provided in the FGIS and fire? So let's come back to the resolution. One that again, two of any other counts have done, and see what it's accomplishing. But what this this resolution is ultimately accomplishing? An uncertainty. Property owners and future town boards could certainly thank you for greatness and certainty, because some of these base studies will go down in the light of the future. And there will be arguments to be made if they're no longer good. All other developer aside, it's likely not it, but why in further improvement speed with the triangle, for example? Without specifying what issue you have with these base studies, with any detailed basis of knowledge, you're going to pass a resolution. That says basically, across the board, blankly, we're not accurate, should have improved. They have your engineers, planners, and science that's had spending more money to recreate, you know? Simply, we're putting politics before community and playing to allow supporters. We're making it unnecessarily potentially harder for the town, its residents, the future developers, most small local ones. As small as was your out of town, to fully understand what needs to be done, how we get there, without us understanding the consequences. Before I close out, what I want to say is that feel compelled to shine light on a gaiety chasm. Between supervisor hats, to lesser extent the majority's words and actions relevant to this resolution. In a letter dated June thirteenth two thousand twenty one, the examiner at news, he wrote. Unite Newcastle plan will streamline and accelerate development process. He will focus development.
What does this need to have to do with the resolution and nothing?
I'm going to finish, will focus development, absolutely not. He will focus development on existing vacant structures and simplify existing review process to expedite projects using overlooked talks, special permits and variances. For particular project success for our community is bigger than diversity. And for successive requirements of downtown development, effectively made it possible to develop building at the upper rating site. Again, referencing the zoning plan, we ordered in October fifth two thousand twenty one. UNC's plan will allow for the outlet to retain vitality while ensuring that all development, all development or otherwise is appropriately sized and scope for this community. So please tell us, what is this plan? And we spent more time on this silly and fairly unprecedented resolution than we have on putting forth a practical resolution. The reality is there never was a plan, at least not one that I've ever heard and shared with the public. I know Reverend Levitt, the examiner, is going to use saying, you have been talking to the town staff, you've been working tirelessly on this, referencing the four base code and the FGIS. And we appreciate it, because I think a lot of it will be able to be utilized going forward. That is not what this resolution says. At all. So the winds have changed, I don't know what happened, public opinion, blow in different direction. The problem with that statement is the obvious, even to keep on trying to hide, you're not only using a lot of it, you're using none of it, we're just throwing the entire thing out. There have been some meetings with the planning board, but even there, we made little to no effort to simplify the existing review process to expedite projects.
Again, what does this have to do with the resolution?
Apply any law, you're telling. In fact, while you've been studying, I'll get to that in a second. In fact, while you've been studying, studiously spending hours on this, I would call dribble. The chairman of the planning board sent us a letter on August eighth. And stating among other things, that he and Tom Crowley believe that a public share process is essential to developing optimal plant for each town or property in Chaco outlet. But they believe you, they believe engaging in a public share process at this stage without the benefit of a feasibility, the point, maybe premature. In other words, it seems that these Bob and Tom thinks that you folks might be putting the cart from the horse.
True, thank you.
So, 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 so I spoke with Tom yesterday, I don't, I understand nobody else has spoken with him about this on our stage.
I've spoken with Bob Kirkwood, thank you very much, the chairman of the planning board, but feel free to spread.
And, and then. Okay, I understand nobody else has spoken with Chris. I just wanted to meet Tom yesterday about it. And have you spoken, anyone have spoken to Tom or Bob about the FGIS? And your opinions about whether you should have banned it? If you haven't, I think it's certainly important that you do. So speaking back to the planning board. Even if you didn't speak to the director of planning, even if you didn't speak to Bob Silley. Before you can pass this resolution, I think that it's important that you find out what the planning board believes. Bob Kirkwood, Tom Crowley, about the value of the FGIS and what you're doing. And if you haven't done so, it will ooze you for the interest of this community to do so. I've spoken with them.
As have I, thank you.
And they told you that they believe we should pass this resolution and then the FGIS, really? That's that's funny, because then 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 they're telling us two different stories. On October twenty seventh, when are you speaking?
Doesn't matter.
Ah, I figured. On October twenty seventh two thousand one, before the election.
I don't figure, I actually spoke with Bob yesterday.
He said he wanted to bring an ice skating.
I've spoken with them numerous times over the past number of months, not that we can work in this very long month.
Time and water parts of that. You spent more time, I respect you, on this resolution that you have and try to make that a reality. Nine months in, no pandemic agenda, with constant fires coming out, no hot leak contest in the oiling process. A full town board, not sure our supervisor out of the gate, even when she was here due to tragedy, and we still have meaningful progress. A bank sells its property, that leases its property, that the owners lease the property, that is not of our doing. Ultimately, this town board is a lottery player on that market. Newcastle should always lead by example. But this is not how we want to lead. I passed the resolution. Without being able to articulate with any degree of specificity, what is it about these studies, what is it about the work that you want to prove of? Without speaking to our account planner and getting a response from her, without discussing it with Bob Silley or account engineer. Without talking to Bob Kirkwood, without talking to Tom Crowley, without talking to the planning board. To throwing away what will cause uncertainty in the future. It's just not necessary, it's dead, it's over. Nine months, nine months, and we've made no progress, other than roughly in July, first considerings to start a share process. This is a long resolution, not just for a long time, but also for. All right, there you go.
Okay, thank you for your thoughts, and you're wearing little. Anyway, thank you for your thoughts, does anyone else have any other comments on the resolution?
I don't have comments on the resolution, I think you want to take it as an answer to what you said. So first off, you quoted me from executive session in a broader context, so I take that as a fact. Want to use the term, want to use the term, want to use the term beating it at horse in executive session in a broader context, so I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate that.
Also, actually.
And that's number one. Number two, um one thing I did say earlier this year is that if you're gonna take everyone's time to make political speeches, you should resign. There might not be comments, that would be a better response. Um number three, you keep citing this notion of being a lottery, well, that's not really the relevant point. Relevant point is, for two years, fire board pursued a poorly conceived, poorly articulated, poorly communicated, poorly executed four base code plan. We ran against that, we ran against that, against the people who ran against us last year, we won, and the four base code was shown. What's happened in town since, we're not taking credit for it. What we did know last year is you didn't need a four base code. What we do know is that members of the fire town board, including yourself, and the people we ran against, said things like, our town is dead or done. We need a four base code, otherwise our town is dead or done. What we know is that we didn't. We know is that the four base code went away, and we know is that our town is not dead or done. And we're not taking credit for that. The credit goes to the amazing people who built those businesses. What we do know is that we didn't need that, one didn't need to leave three of them. So that's just one other point that, you know, frankly, is is irrelevant to this discussion. Keep bringing it up, I understand it plays well politically, I guess, but I don't really know what the point is. Point is, we're here, the town is the way it is right now. And the facts that played out are the way they played out. You didn't need a four base code, you didn't need to do any of the things that you, the fire board, and the people we ran against last year said we needed to get to this place. So that's my other response there. In terms of this particular resolution, what exactly are you concerned about? Like, you know, I'm just gonna finish the thought. What exactly are you concerned about? Because it feels like, as Lisa said, you know, there's some, you know, kind of sour grapes and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if we pass this resolution. It's as if we're turning back the clock and the process that would have led to the four base code never happened. Underlying information, underlying facts, underlying studies are completely valid to the extent they're valid. No one's saying that the work that was done is improper. We're saying the analysis, we're saying the conclusions, those are the things that we want to put a bow on and finally put to bed. So that's the way I think about this, um but, you know, we'd love to hear what you are specifically concerned about, you know, going forward as well, I think.
And and before you go there, since this is Robert's reporter and I was calling people. Before you go there, Jeremy, had you attended the last few meetings, you would have been part of the discussion or even watched the recap. Where we discussed that we did not want the underlying data to necessarily be suspect. That I'm gonna finish speaking, that um it's the analysis of that data that's suspect. Anyone who wants to develop can come in and if there's underlying data, we're not saying they can't pick that up and present that to the town board. What we're saying is any analysis associated with it is um is not going to be accepted. What we're also saying is potentially not every piece of underlying data is also appropriate. Which is why we couldn't outright accept everything in there.
Okay, so number one, I I appreciate you trying to point out, I did this last year, because I didn't miss that thing. But if you're gonna do that, please point out like anyone else's, number one. Number two, um Chris, I I pulled up specific sections that I articulated my issues with them. Uh this is not about four base code that it is dead, and I never said that we need a four base code. I said we needed to make changes to the community because it is dying. And yes, we have a somewhat of a renaissance. The question isn't whether that renaissance exists, it's whether it's sustainable and it's long term. And whether that's going to carry not just the future, but for once in years, decades down the road. So it needs to be major steps, and you all came into this election not just to get rid of the, this time or not to get rid of the four base code. But to create your vision that you referenced multiple times, you collected your references multiple times. And if you want to stick, if you want to say forget politics, which you're gonna make it about politics, let's just look at this base question. And you can answer directly, passing this resolution. Did you speak to Bob Kirkwood, Tom Crowley, planning board, account engineer, account planner? And you had mentioned somewhere else about we in the past, when we passed the town board, disregarded and closed out planning board. You know, so why not give them an opportunity to apply the juris, say, you know what? We don't want you to do that, but we do want you to do that, or you should edit it this way. Last but not least, Lisa, I appreciate your point, but there was an opportunity to put in specific language to ensure that those underlying studies. Would survive and it wouldn't be uncertainty. You're you're very right, it could be that it is flattering, okay, but you're creating unnecessary uncertainty. And there was an opportunity, you you wanted the opportunity, certainly it's your your resolution, to put that language in, to make it clear that those underlying studies are valuable and still place. You didn't, you didn't want it. So so I I'm a little bit of a lost, to say this now but not put it in there, I'm a little confused. So you're creating uncertainty in a fairly unprecedented, precedented resolution that's unnecessary.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so why don't we then move out to the next item?
So our next item is our series of administrative items. I'm gonna actually jump out of order because Bart's here joining us. We uh we're. Bart, you wanna hold the chair?
Can we pull the chair, sit down?
This is a two chair, yeah. Thank you.
So far as you all know, our carrier is our commissioner of public works, um and uh, because unfortunately we are all aware. The generator at the middle water treatment plant suffered a catastrophic failure uh six weeks ago.
That's like June sixth, a little bit of a chance.
Was it really, I was afraid it was early June. Yeah, um in early June. Bart has been spearheading the efforts um to work with our insurance company to try to figure out the cause, underlying cause of the um the failure was, and where do we go from here? We have had communications from our insurance company um who is prepared to uh settle the matter for a sizable sum to take and repair it. Uh we can use the money either to repair or replace it. I'm gonna turn it over to Bart, he has submitted to the board a pretty thorough analysis as to what his recommendations would be. Bart, you want to just take a review of that all, wait for it?
Sure, yeah.
Do you want to cover that, do you have to cover that?
Uh I brought it.
Okay, great, all right.
Um so the generator is, it's a nineteen ninety generator. Uh the pump station was built before the building, nineteen ninety. And uh it went online in nineteen ninety three, so it's still in nineteen ninety, it's thirty two years old. And it has three thousand nine hundred hours of weeps on it. And uh it has been going and experienced a failure uh on June sixth. Uh nobody's been able to determine exactly why. Uh it it failed, I think it appears to be something mechanical, our insurance carrier has indicated that we have coverage. Uh for the dollar amount to repair the generator. Um and also for some of the the temporary generator that we have in place there. Tell the generator please repair. To repair the generator estimates four hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Uh the generator has two major components, so there's the diesel motor that drives the generator portion that creates the electricity. So that cost would only be to rebuild the motor. You would still have the other significant portion of the generator, the part that actually generates the electricity being third people. So we have to ask ourselves, do we want to repair this generator or do we just buy? Uh unfortunately, with the way things are out there now and the lead time items to get a new generator, it'll change to twelve to fourteen months. If you get a new generator in six months, this will be much easier decision. But even with the long lead time of a new generator, it still um appears to be the most economical. Um so I out, I just outlined the the two options, and the estimated cost for the new generator is nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um and that is just to buy the generator, so I just wanted to be clear on this as well. And going forward, there will be more costs on this, we're gonna need to hire an engineer and come up with plans, and then we need to put out a bid for a contractor to install the generator. But we feel that we can do that while we're waiting for this new generator to be built. Um we actually waited to order the generator, that would just add more time to get the engineer first, so that could be done in parallel to save some time there with that.
What's the size of the generator then?
Uh it's a one point five megawatt. It's a very large generator, so it powers the the pump station there and and filter. So the uh we're paying now a little over thirty three thousand dollars a month to rent the generator. So I've estimated the the cost for that generator in option one of fourteen months, that's if we buy a new one. But it'll be four months of rental for the gen- generator if we rebuild the existing one. And and if you do that, there's still savings of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There is a couple other potential savings uh options for the option one. So if we have the temporary generator in place while we order the new one. Uh that will save us on the cost of bringing a temporary generator back. So if we rebuild the generator that's there now, and we get rid of the temporary generator in four months. The recommendation still is to replace this generator. It's three years old. So we would then have to order a generator. And when that generator arrives, we would have to bring back a temporary generator to set up while the process is being done to take the fuel pump out and install it. So that'd probably be around forty thousand dollars, we're paying thirty three thousand six hundred a month, but that doesn't include delivery and setup. Um we're also in the process of um coming up with plans to replace the fuel tank that's there for the generator. That's an underground fuel tank that was an original installation and. That's an underground fuel tank that was an original installation and to remove that and put in an underground tank. With this temporary generator in place, we would not need to have a temporary tank brought in. So if we fix the generator that's there and then, over the next spring, we'll be doing this, uh, fuel tank replacement project. We would need to have a temporary fuel source brought in and set up just for the project. So if we stay with the temporary generator we have now, we would avoid the cost of moving that. Um, also the, the generator that is gonna be purchased is for the current low sulfur fuel, uh, diesel fuels to have, uh, high sulfur content. And that's the way the motor was designed back in nineteen ninety. So there's, uh, fuel that, uh, goes to work as well on the fuel. What he remembers is like letting gas, we had to let out. We needed to buy it in car and to build a quarter to accommodate the unleaded gas. Kind of outlines it out. I don't know if there's any questions. And so if you're finding something, what is, what is the sharing with Pleasantville? So this is a, a capital project, so that would be nineteen ninety.
And what are we spending to rent it again?
It's thirty thousand six hundred a month.
A month. So does it make sense to repair it? And because we're gonna need something to keep us going for the next twelve months.
Yeah, so we would stay with the temporary generator for that whole time.
But isn't that expensive?
Insurance covers it. The insurance will cover the rental for the period, uh, to prepare the existing battery. So we've already had the rental for two months. I think to repair it in another two months. So they would probably cover it for four months. They would, that's what I outlined to you.
Yeah, yeah.
They would cover that too, though, right? The four months of the rental.
Yes.
Beyond that.
But beyond that, they're not gonna cover it if we decide to buy a new generator.
Bob, if we decide to repair it, you're saying we would be in this position?
Yeah.
For the year.
Yes.
Yes.
In the very case.
Yes.
No, I was thinking just repair it while we're waiting the year.
Right, no, no, we definitely consider that.
It might have a guy who can get something a lot faster, who has like a stockpile of generators, just so you know, so I can put us in touch. But if we can't, it might be more economically feasible to kind of repair it so that we're not spending that thirty thousand dollars a month.
Well, it is, it's, yeah.
And then as we wait the year to get the new one.
Right.
Need to say, a lot of time.
Yeah, no, that's, that's why we looked at it and, uh, understanding that it is, it's definitely monthly cost to rent the generator. So the, for fourteen months to rent the generator is, uh, it's four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and change. And for four months, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
The problem is.
The big difference is, you know, the second option, you're, you're taking four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars with that insurance money and repairing a generator, um, that we can replace within a year or two.
Yeah.
Like that, uh, the salvage, I'm waiting to hear from somebody who can look at salvage value, it might be like that twenty thousand dollars.
It would be more expensive.
Even after you just sagged it and stopped playing until, we don't have a power shortage yet, but, uh, the salvage value should be there. Or, or the mortgage. So all, and, and all of this, you know, it takes time. That's why we're trying to make a decision now and go out to bid for the new generator. Because if we just, uh, prolong our decision-making process, we're, we're just gonna make very difficult decisions.
Uh, and, and I, I, I know that the board is very concerned about, uh, grants and grant opportunities. Um, we are in the midst of, uh, applying for, uh, some grants this year. This, uh, this replacement generator, the, the new one, will be the subject of a grant in twenty, a grant application in twenty twenty. Again, shared services.
And I think because it's shared services with Pleasantville that we hopefully have a better chance of making it.
Right, really, and so we, we are, um, we become eligible to, for a different pile of money. Um, so, uh, we believe that we have our, uh, projects having to do with water treatment plant because they're used directly on within another municipality. On top of that, we're in emergency water resource for two other municipalities and we got by in the, we invested in municipal units with, uh, three other municipalities to provide that water. So between that and the fact that, you know, just maybe it is a regional water supply, how we believe that they're, well, should be, they're a strong statement. We've also been talking to our, our state legislators about this as well, uh, to get grant funds. So, uh, the, the grants are, um, R J. by September ninth. We've got, uh, so we used the one we diligently on on the, uh, we've been, we've been looking at things, so.
Yeah, and, and so this is a, a very big purchase. Typically how it's handled, the last generator that was, uh, purchased for a new pump station, was around two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen. It's a very lengthy bid document that goes out. And we actually had the engineering firm, uh, had an engineer fly to the facility where it's manufactured to witness the testing. So it's called witness shop testing. An engineer goes there to the facility and, you know, they run a battery test on it for a day or two and they watch and see how the testing does. And we never can worry about all of that. So, you guys, it's, uh, I don't know who you know, but, uh, getting one of these generators in, in the process that we follow, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's not small. And it takes some time.
Yeah, and we, yeah. So these are all, you know, made to our specifications. It's not gonna, who we gave it off the shelf for, like, names.
Right.
Um, Rob, what are your thoughts on this? Oh, exactly.
Yeah, thanks for the chat. I defer to Bart because, I mean, I, I, um, whatever Bart's recommendation is, I, I, obviously it's a little complicated without, um, I think ultimately we need to purchase a new one. So I, I guess the only, um, question is whether we're gonna continue to rent a temporary generator like some of the other ones. If, if we knew exactly when a new generator would be available, that would, uh, give us a higher level of certainty that the clause statements that were put forward would be there.
Well, I know that's one of the questions that we're gonna be asking when we issue our B document is gonna be, you know, how long is it gonna take for this to be manufactured? We're, we're hopeful that the twelve to fourteen months is very conservative. And then perhaps, um, you know, the, the, the lead time will be significant. I think any portion of us could be. Is, is the board comfortable with your authorization to that, too?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bart.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hope you're able to.
We should see the. Thanks, all right. Um, all right, we're just gonna jump back up on top. There's, uh, a payment of claims. Uh, the next is the authorization to approve our liability insurance renewal. Um, I sent the board a, just a bit of a cheat sheet last night. An email, um, just, uh, basically stating that in light of, in light of the fact that over the past eighteen months, we've had the most complaints, we've had the most recent claims. We are not the, um, most prized, uh, um, client of an insurance company. We're actually very happy that we got the single, uh, premium. Um, not only is our claims history a little, uh, shaky at this point, but, uh, also we still had a, um, a high hazard dam, uh, within the town's possessions. That's the legal dam that we're seeking to decommission. Once we decommission it, there are actually insurance companies who work for us. But at this point, the only one that builds are, um, we, uh, we did do a little bit of research with RJ, uh, able to determine that we, uh, in the past five years, uh, we have not, um, filed a claim for under ten thousand dollars. So we're thinking that recent are deductible from the twenty-five hundred to the ten thousand, which is basically consistent to our other coverages. Um, basically waiting for us to see a twenty-five thousand dollars for this year. And I think at this point, it's, it's approved, we can go. Um, also, we are cognizant of the fact that, uh, we own a carry Hates Cross Road which we currently have a subcontract on. And, uh, hopefully they will close the, uh, the early part of September. Um, once that, uh, was going, going to plan and, uh, that property is sold, uh, ten thousand dollars of this payment will also be charged. So, right, now we've got to cover it and, uh, yeah.
Any questions, Lawrence? Um, I thought it was a very clear email, so thank you. Um, you know, I think next year or two years, as soon as the dam comes off, hopefully our rates will be coming down and rightfully we don't have so many insurance, uh, claims next year. And we did, can definitely get Hates Cross off within a month. Is it only ten thousand dollars of that amount was allocated to Hates Cross?
That's right. Yeah.
It seemed like it should be higher. Or on an annual level.
I know. I wonder, I mean, I think it should be about her own insurance.
Right, but I, it has part of our overall coverage, I, I think, you know, that, that's different than just the standalone property.
You hear. Yeah.
Yeah. You're augmenting it.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and one thing that RJ brought up too, that I thought was a good point, that it's like, a lot of insurance claims are acts of God or one-time. But these are really kind of catastrophic, uh, oil leak the prior year. These aren't things that are looking likely to be repeated at, at such a rate. And we do have a very good claims history if you look in the long run. Um, you know, we, we haven't had excessive like done in these last two years. So, um, well, and, and that was one of the reasons why Zurich even came in at a reasonable rate is because, you know, as RJ said, it's kind of an opportunity for them to make some of their money back, right? So they lost money last year on us. Despite help of, you know, they gave us a reasonable rate. Uh, if they had given us another ballpark rate, somebody else undercut them, that'd leave. And they're not able to pay these claims and not recruit or not maintain their business for multiple years. So, um, we've seen in the last eight or ten years with workers' comp, what happened. Um, we had a quote, renewal quote a year that we switched, it was close to a million dollars. Um, and we're now down to three, four hundred thousand dollars. So, um, hopefully we would, uh, better claims history if we can bring these, uh, we want these one-time accidents.
Right. Yeah, and you know, um, the thing is, is that, uh, we're, we're a little smarter with each one of these bands. Um, when it came to the, um, the oil tank, we, that was actually a containment system that just happened to be filled with snow, we'll talk about it for you guys.
Right.
With ice and snow, um, because of the winter. And so, uh, and we've heard, you know, I don't really know. Um, we have since, uh, evaluated all of our, our tanks and we have had double hold tanks installed on everything else because we now know that this, this is not the, the surefire containment system we were hoping it was when we installed it initially. So we've gone around and, uh, and replaced all of those, um, oil tanks to make sure that this can't happen in the future, so.
Well, I'm comfortable with, with the renewal and with increasing the premium to ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Does anyone else have any thoughts?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable. It was a very clear. All right, thank you. Um, there is just, uh, one, uh, oh, one change to the resolutions when we get there, the, uh, the, the premium. That was a, that was a basic amount, but we, we grow the whole name, didn't include all the other add-ons that we have. So I have an increase number for you when you're ready.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, get it, right, yeah. Otherwise it won't get me, right? Um, returning to the, uh, administrative items, we've got, um, authorization and, let's see, a resolution authorizing of the issuance of an amended RFP for architectural and engineering services for, for water treatment plant. Um, oof, uh, so we went out to bid for this, we received two bids that, um, uh, asked for, um, solar as part of an option and we really didn't, um, get a complete answer.
We need to get clear, reliable quotes, proposals back based on our P to be initially set out.
So we would like to be able to reissue it and we're, um, actually kicking solar out and doing that as a separate RFP, a, a, a separate, um,
An alternative.
Yeah, I think.
At, at this point, I think, I know they have a meeting. Um, that's the first step, but it's, we're gonna do it in two steps and just deal with a renewable item with respect to the amended RFP.
Right.
And the solar separately. I think that makes sense. There's a lot of challenges with solar, yeah.
And, and that was, and that was the problem, the, the initial RFP. Um, the next is authorization to obtain bids for the river construction at the Chappaqua, the Wampe Wampe Center. We've gotta get going on that as well. Um, next is again, uh, what we just discussed with Bart regarding we have the bids for the new generator. Uh, next is authorization to obtain professional land surveying services. Um, we actually don't have a survey, line survey from the Chappaqua, uh, the Wampe Wampe Center. We would like to keep close by the end of the year. Um, so trying to get our ducks in a row and get everything out of that.
That's, that's not like a division to the overall survey, Chappaqua crossing, which is on.
No, they actually, um.
Demised. You, you see the property depicted on, on that larger survey, but you wouldn't have a survey of that particular one acre of property, one acre piece.
Yeah, we were hoping it, it came with part of the property, that's, that's, that's fortunately. Uh, next is authorization to obtain a change order, uh, for, uh, subservice investigation. So in, uh, in the course of replacing the pedestrian bridge on March twenty that was damaged with the hurricane, uh, Tectonic wants to do some, um, some investigation, uh, due technical supports. Because of the, that the, uh, slope and the tightness of the area, they have to do it differently. That's what we're hoping for. We're hoping that, uh, just that these changes associated with that are placed correctly. Um, next is authorization for the, uh, maintenance proposal for our screen statute. We actually have a, a gentleman come say twice a week, every other year, two weeks. Uh, Steve Roy, um, just back from the Smithsonian, um, to take a, uh, our screen if he's not.
And if we done, it's not that much money, but if we done looked at costs from other.
Yeah, this, this is a, um, there, there's very few people in the country that, that do this. Uh, he's the, we'll see what, we don't have to pay for it. People that are in person, uh, person, uh, to be able to do it. But, uh, yeah, he's, he is the, uh, the leader in it. Of course. Um, again, it's a hundred eighty-five dollars, it's just a little bit more than what we had on the, four years ago, so. I just wanted the board to be aware of it. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the last one is the I N A. request of accounting to give the stunning force for a new pump. First you. Okay, um, anything after that?
Is, you know, that last, um, administrative items, uh, related to the, um, Newcastle United for you?
Um.
With the youth officer?
That's what it's all these, there is, um, something, there is a monetary, um, expenditure that, uh, Newcastle United, the youths in the midst of, um, vetting through their processes as soon as they submit a tax report, we'll be on next event.
But again, that's, this is different.
That's really a real, but that's not our topic.
Yeah, it's, it's very possible. They have their own, yeah. It's just that they approve it and they give it to us. We do it as a mysterious test, uh, and then we're obviously able to pay it. But they have to go through the same protocols we do when it comes to, uh, approval of expenditures. Any questions, anything? Okay, and I think we're really ready for our resolutions.
All right, um, does everyone have one? Do you want to start?
I, I moved to approve the payment of claims that my nine hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred three dollars and eighty-nine cents listed on the summary pre-check writing report, detailed action, detailed report, rotated of August, first year checks will be cut. I mean, at this time, boys at August seventh, two thousand two.
Second.
On favor.
Bart, a minute. Bart? Uh, I don't think I have to read this whole thing right now. I just wanted to skip to that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, full clauses. Resolution concerning the final chair requirement, the type statement adopted on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, F G E I S for the proposed form-based zoning code. I move to adopt the following resolution. It resolves that the town board hereby states and declares as follows. One, adoption of a form-based code for the downtown Chappaqua Hammonds, unnecessary and not a desirable method for achieving redevelopment in study area or for advancing the goals of the town's twenty seventeen comprehensive plan. Two, D G E I S, F G I S, including all analyses and responses contained therein. Therefore, the form-based code did not adequately define and assess potential adverse environmental impacts to community character arising under a full
to community character arising over a full build-out scenario of the entire seventy two acres of study area did not adequately minimize or avoid identified adverse environmental impacts. Three, D G I S, F G I S proposed form-based code were fundamentally flawed insofar as they attempted to analyze the scope of potential adverse impacts upon community character and other environmental factors arising from the potential rezoning of the entire seventy two acre study area or any portion thereof. The D G I S, F G I S, including all analyses and responses contained therein should not be utilized to support any proposed action regarding rezoning the study area or any portion thereof. Four, based on extensive record, the town board found there to be significant adverse impacts to community character and other environmental issues arising from the rezoning the entire Chapel Public Hamlet Business District and portion thereof. Under the proposed form-based code, it cannot be added if it is or if accordingly the C B R review for rezoning the entire seventy two acre study area or a portion thereof under a form-based code is declared null and hereby officially abandoned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
I move to authorize the renewal of the town's property cavity umbrella, I know C T Insurance and Zurich Insurance come to me for a new quote of five hundred and thirty two thousand thirty six.
No, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, it's five, six, two, nine, nine, so.
Five hundred and six sixty two, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Yeah. Dollars.
Uh effective August thirty one, twenty twenty two through August thirty one, twenty twenty three.
Give me a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Uh I moved to adopt the following resolution, whereas um um whereas on May second, the town issued an RFP for architectural and professional engineering services related to the replacement of a roof at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. And whereas the town received only two responses to such RFP. And whereas upon review of said RFP responses, the town has decided to revise the scope of the RFP to eliminate the portion thereof related relating to the assessment and potential replacement of existing roof drive, solar array at the water treatment plant. And we issue the same. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby withdraws the RFP as issued on May second, twenty twenty two. And authorizes town staff to prepare and issue a new RFP for the project consistent with this resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to issue a bid to hire a contractor to replace the roof of the Chapel Public Forum Arts. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to issue a bid to purchase a new generator for the Millwood Water Treatment. So, all in favor? I move to authorize the town engineer to prepare an RFP for land surveying services for the preparation of property line survey of the Chapel Public Forum Arts. So, all in favor? I move to approve change order number one from Tectonic Engineering Consultants uh to prepare task one point one to one point seven, which include a mobilization of limited access and ATV mounted drill rig, uh drilling soil and rock, full-time inspection, laboratory services and geotechnical analysis and report, the total estimate of the amount of twenty six thousand plus a twenty percent contingency, which equals to a total budget of about three hundred thousand.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh I move to authorize the two amendments to the porch building block statute to Steve Roy Art Restoration LLC for total cost of one thousand eight hundred dollars, to site visit travel materials, labor, and expenses. Sir.
All in favor?
Uh aye, I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement with West Chicago County right and positive youth development program which the county shall refer to town in amounts not to exceed three thousand three hundred ninety nine dollars payable on full contract execution and approval by West Chicago County attorney, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before you close, Chris, I'm gonna call this, you said that in executive session, but I apologize, I just want to say. I appreciate, I apologize, I appreciate.
Um yes, we should all make sure that things aren't said in executive session because I've seen things on Facebook that.
I certainly, I respect, I apologize, I respect that.
Alright, um before we go, I just wanted to remind anybody listening that our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September seventh. The departure from our general Tuesday meetings because Tuesday, there will be an on the horizon uh session for the master plan for the airport held at the Chapel Public Forum Arts Center at six P M. And then our town board meeting will be uh on Wednesday the seventh. Alright, uh anything else? Okay, move to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, have a happy rest of August, everyone.